Good morning. I wish to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Commissioners. It's Wednesday, April the 12th, and I will note for the record that all three Commissioners are present here in the Nat U Hill Room. And turn this over to Commissioner Thomas now.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Department uptake. Ms. Kelly, good morning.
Good morning. So I do have several updates to share with you today. For COVID, not much has really changed. According to the Indiana Department of Health, COVID cases and COVID levels with the wastewater are trending down. In response to the recent storms and tornadoes, the Health Department is currently working with the Indiana Department of Health to provide vital records services and TDA vaccines to those affected by the storms. And I would like to share information today on MRSA. So MRSA, according to the CDC, is a leading cause of community and healthcare-associated This is commonly spread from skin to skin or in the nose, but it does not usually cause According to the CDC, large surfaces such as floors and walls have not been associated with the spread of MRSA. There is no vaccine available, and proper hand hygiene is one of the best steps individuals can take to avoid getting sick and spreading this. The Health Department is currently working to update our website to include additional information and resources for the public on this topic. Other topics we are currently looking at adding include the emerging fungus Canada auroras and links to the Monroe County's COVID wastewater surveillance data. And that is what I have for you today.
Appreciate that. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you so much for the information.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate having additional just public health information out there. So it's quite good. And now I believe we have Ms. Niebel with us from the Emergency Management Department.
Good morning. I just wanted to provide a quick update for the storm efforts near Steinsville, the tornado storm efforts. So far, we've accomplished placing 15 rolloffs along Wolf Mountain and Texas Ridge Road. We've also placed a small one at the former Steinsville Elementary School to help support the Resource Center that is still going with the help of the American Red Cross. Several loads have already been hauled away courtesy of KNS rolloff, and much progress has been seen over the last four days as far as debris cleanup. Tree debris will take the most time, but most residents already have that in progress or at least plan for removing that. Monday was spent doing outreach with a mental health counselor specializing in trauma, and further requests for counseling are being coordinated through myself and through the Red Cross. There is a fund for monetary donations established through the United Way, and physical items that are still needed for supporting those residents are totes with lids, the plastic totes with lids, and those can be dropped off at the Steinsville Elementary School. I would like to give a special thanks to the Steinsville Town Council for letting us use the old elementary school. That has been a tremendous help, and I think that there is a little more coordination between them and the American Red Cross for future use, similar future uses. So that has been great. The Bean Blossom Township's Steinsville Volunteer Fire Department, that's a long one. They've been a big help also with kind of shuttling us and Homeland Security and FEMA around for the multiple damage assessments throughout the last two weeks and allowing us to set up a makeshift EOC in their radio room. The Monroe County Sheriff's Department for allowing us the use of their drone and for providing multiple patrols throughout the damaged areas, very much appreciated by everyone, including the affected residents as well. The Monroe County community organizations active in disaster, they provided some support to the Resource Center, very much appreciated. American Red Cross, of course, the Highway Department, South Central REMC has had quite a daunting job ahead of them trying to restore power to the area and make it safe. So hats off to our linemen. Their efforts are always appreciated. And of course, the Commissioners as well. From an EMA standpoint, the support of you guys has been tremendously appreciated. It's not always expected, but always appreciated. Thank you so much. That's all the updates I have.
That's a lot. Questions or comments, Commissioner Jones?
Well, I'm just very pleased to hear that things are maybe heading towards some sort of normal again. What a disastrous thing to have happen to a community like that.
Jamie, thank you to you and Justin, all of your hard work. Everybody's been talking about how great it's been and can't thank you enough for that. It's, you know, there's a lot of work to do and really appreciate the thanks that you've sent out, but we do want to thank you as well. Really great work and nonstop, I know that, and a lot of paperwork. So really appreciate all of that. Thank you.
Yes, yes. You mentioned that people need totes. Is there like a minimum size that of, because you don't want the little things, you want big ones, right, for people to keep their possessions?
Yeah, so I wish I had a better size for you, but I think they are the, yes, the bigger-sized ones for sure. I know, I'm sorry, that's terribly indescript, but yes, they are the larger-sized ones.
I think they refer to them in like gallon sizes, like an 18-gallon or something like that.
I was thinking the 20-gallon size was my jumping off point, but yes, 20 gallons or larger would be great.
That's fabulous, and thank you, and Justin. Just the coordination and also the extra help from like the Bean Blossom Volunteer Fire Department, just so many people have kicked in and helped here. And this is a reminder to the general community that this is one of the reasons why it's important to sign up for the alert system, and people can do that at our website. So please do, it's important. Thank you very much for joining us today. Appreciate it. Is there any other department? Ms. Ridge?
Good morning. I just want to announce in the last hour, NDOT, we do a community crossing matching grant application. You're available to get $1 million match in a year, in a 12-month period. We submitted for the full million in the January call, and Monroe County was awarded that full million. The projects that are chosen are paving projects for this round of the calls. It came out to about 17.2 miles, so our match will be $1 million. So for $2 million, you know, it comes out to about $116,279.07 per mile to just pave a road. And that does not take into account the work that we've done to prep, the ditching, the pipe replacements, to get these roads ready for paving. But I do want to thank, you know, the Commissioners, the Council, their support this year in the paving program has been tremendous. The crews at the Highway Garage, Stormwater Bridge Crew, Highway Crew's management for getting these roads ready so we can put them out to bid as soon as possible so they can be paved in 2023.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, that's just very exciting about more paving getting done.
Which are the roadways that are going to be?
Pardon me?
Which roadways?
I brought that.
Thank you. I'm sure people are curious.
That's the most important part. And yeah, we do prioritize, we drive these roads that we choose. We don't choose these roads by a petition or phone calls. We choose them as condition across the county. We have 725 miles to choose from, and a lot of them need a lot of work. So the roads that were in this round is Smithville Road, Gardner Road, Tunnel Road, Wampler Road, Burma Road, DeLapp Road, Kerr Creek Road, and then a portion of Roar Road east of Walnut Street Pike.
And I think you said in your email to us that this will be the biggest paving season you could remember, basically, right?
With, if we can get it all with our crews and contracting out, we figure we can get 50-plus miles, which I know that doesn't sound like a lot when you're looking at 725, but we've continued to grow every year. But again, we couldn't have done it without the help of the Council appropriating and the Commissioners' support of these projects. So yeah, well, it'll be a very busy season, but a very productive season.
Thank you, and congratulations on once again maxing out on the community crossing.
Every time.
Yes, you won't be allowed to retire until you're 103, okay? Are there any other departments with an update? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. This is for items that are not on our agenda. There's a limit of three minutes, and if you wish to speak, please tell us your name and whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. And if you would, if you're here in person also, I believe there's a sheet to sign in. So, welcome.
Darryl Ruble, Monroe County resident. I'm very happy this morning. I've been happy for a few days. One thing, in memory of my wife, Loretta Ruble, my daughter Sarah Ruble, the new sheriff. I've never met him. I love him already. You know why? He's righted or wronged. That was done in this town for a long time. The jail, whenever you'd go in there for, whenever you'd go in there, be arrested, they would take you to the drunk tank and make you sleep on a concrete floor. Now you're given a mattress. The question too is, why was that allowed to go on so long? We're Americans. You get arrested, you're innocent till proven guilty, but yet when you're took to the drunk tank, you're made to sleep on a concrete floor. Really? But I'm glad that got righted finally. I think you ought to get a Nobel Peace Prize for doing that. You know, my wife got arrested 10 years ago for, rest in peace, Loretta, about 10 years ago for DUI. You know, I went and got her the next day, she was crying her eyes out. They made me sleep on a concrete floor. You know, that's wrong. And I'm glad that got righted, but I'd like to know why that got, why that happened so long? Did you guys not know that people were being made to sleep on a concrete floor with no mattress, no pillow? You know, I heard it was because the people that work at the jail didn't like it when drunk people come in there and would get sick on the mattresses, they'd have to clean those, so they took them away. That's what I heard, you know? And also, and everything too, at the jail, you know, they need to rotate the jailers because, you know, they get hardened when they go in there every day and they meet people. It's the same old story, they start getting aggravated with the inmates. They need to be rotated somehow to where you don't have the same people working in that jail every year. I mean, I know it's their job, but some kind of rotation needs to happen because, you know, they get jaded, inmates asking for the same thing every day, and it probably makes them a little bit mean. They need to be rotated. They need to be rotated. And Monroe County Sheriff's, every time I've ever had dealings with them guys, them are some of the best police officers. Bloomington's got some good ones, but Monroe County Sheriff's, them guys rock and roll. Them guys are very professional. And Monroe County Highway Department, them guys are the best. They do great when they plow their snow. They do great in the winter, man. You get all these people, oh, the road ain't been done. Well, I say slow down a little bit. People, oh, we can't get up there, well, just slow down a little bit, but they do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate you coming in today.
Thanks for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would just note that the Monroe County Commissioners don't have any responsibility for what happens inside the jail, but we appreciate your words and that you came in today. Thank you.
Mr. Spoonmore, please join us.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, and I'm Eric Spoonmore, President of the Chamber of Commerce. It was great to hear all the updates from the departments and all the good work that's going on. Congratulations, Ms. Ridge. Congratulations, and great job to Emergency Management. We'll make sure that our chamber members are aware of everything that's going on there so that they can help support those efforts as well too. But I'm here today to talk about one of my favorite topics, the Convention Center, and I just wanted to thank Commissioner Giddens for being up in Indianapolis yesterday to testify on the House Bill 1499, which kind of came as a surprise to me. I got word of it at about 6:00 in the morning yesterday, and as I was reading through some of the provisions, it was concerning, I think, as I would imagine some of you probably are, that it takes away some of those guardrails and safeguards for county government with the expansion process and with the food and beverage tax. So again, appreciate, it sounds like Senator Yoder's working on trying to get another fix for us. I don't know how much longer we can count on her to get these things done for us here in Monroe County, but certainly appreciate all of her efforts up there in Indianapolis as well too. I know the CIB ordinance that you all had kind of drafted expired, that was contingent on the city's participation in that process. You know, we had, of the four entities involved, we had three who were ready to participate. Unfortunately, we had one who did not, but I think, you know, just to reassure you all, I think the community, particularly the business community, to us, it's a foregone conclusion. I don't think we're ever going to be able to get all four entities on board with this, but I hope that won't let us stop a capital improvement board going forward, and I hope we can get that created as soon as possible because it is important to note that of the 20 elected officials that were involved in this process, 18 of them wanted to move forward with a capital improvement board. And so would just encourage you, we haven't heard a lot about it recently, so I know these topics came up in Indianapolis yesterday. They move really quickly up there. It's incredible how quick they can move in Indianapolis versus, you know, how quick we can move here at the local level, but would just encourage you all to get that capital improvement board put in place, make appointments to it. And then again, to note that at the Chamber's most recent mayoral forum, we heard no objections from any of the three candidates that are running for mayor to a capital improvement board. In fact, they all said they want this project to move forward as well too. So I think you'll have a willing partner, and would just encourage you again to establish this as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I understand that the Chamber is also going to send a letter up to some of the folks in Indianapolis to back the-
Yeah, we'll do whatever we can to help.
We appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment, either in person or virtually? Seeing none, move on to approval of the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes for April 5, 2023.
Second.
Are there any comments or corrections? I think I sent one correction, so we're all good. So with that, I'll call for a vote on approval of the minutes from April 5, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, April 12, 2023.
Second.
And Bree? Good morning. It's unusual to see you up here.
Good morning, Commissioners. The accounts payable docket for today, April 12, 2023, totals $563,863.98. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
None, thank you. I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the claims docket for accounts payable, April 12, 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. I want to note for the record, there are no reports this week. Onto new business.
I move approval of revisions to the Health Department code chapters 310 and 341.
Second.
And we have Ms. Kelly back with us.
Yes, so this is just approval for the revisions that we made, chapter 341 and 310 that we discussed at the work session on April 5. So we would like to go ahead and move forward with the chapter 310 changes. We still do need to present these revisions to the Board of Health, and we plan on doing that on April 27. And then we will move forward with making the changes to chapter 341 and present that to the Board of Health, and then back to you for ratification on those changes.
And I would just ask, can you make it clear when you expect these changes to go into effect? Because I know we had talked about the, your season of when you do these things had already passed, and so this was going to be effective next, starting next year.
Correct, certainly. So we would like approval to make these changes go into effect on March 1 of 2024 so that we have time to just get the structures in place that we need to, such as processing the payments, and so that all of the establishments can be on the same annual fee schedule.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yes, I, unfortunately, I forgot my computer today, so I don't have this in front of me. But can you explain to me the change to retail food distributor? I'm not sure, it was changed from food processor, no, it wasn't processor, food service.
Oh, food service?
Yeah.
Yes, so that was just really a language change that we were looking at making, so eliminating food service throughout the entire code and instead using the term retail food establishment. And again, from my understanding, and I do have Mr. Kumaka here with me, if I'm incorrect, but that is just because we're updating the terminology in our chapter 341.
But can, where, is there a difference between the two terms? Or is there a difference? Why was one chosen over the other?
All the licensing, they didn't meet the food code for food protection, they all have to meet the code for the retail food establishment. So they all, they meet the same standards for food protection.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Thomas?
I appreciate these updates. It's unfortunate that the licensing for seasonal food service is not going to be able to take effect until next year, and that's really unfortunate. But I understand it, and I do appreciate all the other work that's gone into this, so thank you.
Yes, I appreciated seeing the changes highlighted in red and easy to follow.
And if I could, just so Anita doesn't kill me, the gentleman in your office who was making comments, can you make sure she has his name for the minutes?
Yeah, I'm Michael Kazimka, and the seasonal definition's going to stay the same, just the multi-market we want to roll out for next year.
Right.
Right. That's the unfortunate thing, is that we can't get the lower price in this year. That's the unfortunate thing. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on Health Department code chapter revisions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of the Indiana Department of Natural Resources Division of Fish and Wildlife Grant Fund named Stormwater, Fund Number 1197, the amount of $7,000.
Second.
And we have Ms. Thetonia here to tell us about this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelsey Thetonia, MS4 Coordinator with the Monroe County Highway Department. I'm here to present a grant agreement with the Indiana Department of Natural Resources for a Lake and River Enhancement Program Grant. This is for a project to remove a small log jam on Bremet's Creek, and the award is for $7,000, which is equal to 80% of the total project cost. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm just curious if this log jam has been causing serious destruction or problems?
Yeah, we've been dealing with this specific area for the past couple of years. There's been a lot of woody debris and some of the larger flood events. Actually just went out there yesterday to take new pictures of the log jam, and with the recent rains, we had the debris accumulation is actually up to the elevation of the road, so we want to really remove this so that we can reduce road flooding concerns.
Thank you.
It's a great idea, thank you.
Yeah, it protects the road and saves money in the long run, but thank you for getting this grant to take care of it. That's super, really is. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on Indiana Department of Natural Resources Division of Fish and Wildlife Grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ms. Thetonia.
Thank you.
Next item.
I move approval of the Axoff Workforce Manager Agreement, Fund Named Kimball Capital Development Fund, Fund Number 1138, and amount of $9,000.
Second.
And we have Mr. Cron here with us.
Good morning, everyone. Greg Cron, Technical Services Department. What I have this morning is our Monroe County Probation Department uses a GPS phone application for its field officer phones for tracking and reporting purposes. Previously, this software was provided through a partnership with AT&amp;T and Axoff, so it was added on to our monthly cell phone bill for those particular devices. Recently, that partnership between AT&amp;T and Axoff dissolved, resulting in the need for us to have a direct agreement with them. The price does not change, we will be paying the same price now that we paid previously under the partnership. This is actually for a three-year agreement. We are billed monthly on this for $250 a month, so that brings the cost to $3,000 a year, a total of nine over the three-year agreement. I did go ahead and look at competing software to see if there'd be any price advantage or any advantage at all for us to go something else. All the competitors were at the same price point, so there wasn't any real cost savings there to be found. So we decided to go ahead and stay with this software and go from there.
Great. Comments, questions?
Yeah, I think anytime you don't change software, it's easier.
By the time we did, you did your setup, employee training, lost productivity, the dollar or so a month you were going to save was a wash, so, yeah.
I appreciate that you shopped around. Thank you.
Yes, yes. I appreciate all this work on it too, and thanks for answering my questions.
Sure.
In advance. Okay. Is there any comment from the public on this? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Axoff Workforce Manager Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Cron.
Thank you, everyone.
Next item.
I move approval of a Safe Place Agreement with Owen County Fair Association, Fund Name Safe Place, Fund Number 9103, and the amount of $200.
Second.
And we have Ms. McCammon here with us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cassidy McCammon, and I am the Safe Place Coordinator for Monroe, Owen, and Green Counties. We would like to renew our annual contract with the Owen County Fair to promote Safe Place. This is consistently one of our biggest events throughout the year, and it gives us the opportunity to share this information with over 1,000 youth in Owen County across the whole week of the fair. The total cost for the booth is $200, and the fair dates are July 9 through the 15th.
Questions or comments?
Just happy you're doing this. It's great to reach out to as many kids as possible.
Absolutely. It's also a lot of fun, so.
Commissioner Thomas?
No comments, but thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't remember what it's like out at the fair grounds in Owen County, but I know in Monroe County, it gets really hot and nasty inside those things, so thank you for spending the week out there. I mean, it's, yeah. I have to say, too, for anybody that hasn't seen the, the kind of forms that we get from the fair, they're a little logo at the top with the cow and the pig and the sheep, it just, it was, it was cute.
It's really cute.
Kind of cheered me up, yeah. Okay. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, a call for a vote for the Safe Place Agreement with Owen County Fair Association. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ms. McCammon.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Next item, please.
I move approval of agreement with Sound Management Advertising, fund named Election, fund number 1215, and amount not to exceed $4,016.
Second. Thank you, and we have Ms. Brown with us. Good morning. I'm sorry, Clerk Brown, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having me today. I wanted to bring some news to your attention first, since early voting started one week ago Tuesday, we have had 323 voters to take advantage of early voting. That was as nine, as of 9:45 this morning, when I was coming to see you. We have had 278 ballots mailed out, and of those 278, 57 have been returned. We have only had the two overseas military ballots that I mentioned to you last week, and both of those are already, have already been returned. We have three requests for travel board, which starts this coming Thursday, and so we anticipate people will obviously take advantage, more advantage of that as the Thursday date approaches. Which brings me to why I am here, and that is for the radio and digital equivalent of my request from last week. We are doing everything that we can to get the word out and to, as far as voter outreach, that early voting is underway. We want to educate those voters and make sure that everybody understands that not every registered voter is eligible to vote, and this is one of those ways that we do that ahead of the primary election. And so, we appreciate your support with that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you for the outreach, appreciate it.
Yes, we, this is participatory government, people need to vote, and so, thanks.
These numbers are obviously disappointing, and we certainly hope that more people will get out and take advantage of this.
And this is not only for people who live within the boundaries of Bloomington, but also for Ellisville.
Correct.
Yes, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Mr. Spoonmore?
Hi again, Eric Spoonmore, President of the Chamber of Commerce. We support this and support all of the Clerk's efforts. She's been doing a great job. Their staff is with these elections. We know it's a big production. The Chamber of Commerce takes elections very seriously. We want everybody to go out to vote. I mentioned this at our most recent mayoral forum. While we have three Democrats running for mayor, you don't have to be a Democrat to vote in this election. You can just simply walk into your polling place, tell them you want to vote for mayor, and they'll give you the ballot to do that. So, just encourage everybody to make their voices heard in this election. Don't disenfranchise yourself. It's important that we use the power of our vote to make our voices heard. So, thank you all for what you do with, with our elections and making sure that they are seamless, and we get swift, quick results, and just appreciate all that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. Is there anyone else who has public comment?
I will note for the record also that early in-person voting, you can do this at 302 South Walnut Street, and in addition to being open Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00, and that runs through April 28, there's also early voting on Saturday, April 15 and April 22 from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And on Monday, May the 1st, the early voting location will be open only from 8 until noon. And if people have questions, or if they need to know where they go to vote on Election Day, and the polls will be open on Election Day from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., they can contact the Clerk's office. The number's 812-349-2690, or you can visit the website, which is monroecountyvoters.us. So, we do encourage people to get out and vote. There is contested race also out in Ellisville, and there are contested races for the City Council within, inside Bloomington in addition to the mayoral races. And so, when we talk about public safety, when we talk about all kinds of other things that go on, who we elect is important, so please get out and vote. With that, I'll call for a vote on Sound Management Advertising Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Clerk Brown, for coming out today.
There are several items to remind people of. We have free COVID testing available through the Monroe County Health Department at 119 West 7th Street, as well as at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. We are accepting applications for some of the boards and commissions that we have. You can fill out an application online at co.monroe.in.us. We, again, I want to remind people that we have virtual office hours for the Commissioners. We have those six times a month, and you can get online and talk with us. You can call in. The information is on the calendar at our website. Makes it easy. I've already done my two hours for this month, so I'll leave this to the rest of you to shoulder that. We have blood drives. These are all at Ivy Tech in Shreve Hall at 200 Daniel's Way. There's one Thursday, May the 11th, from 10:00 to 3:00. Friday, May the 12th, from 1:00 to 6:00. There's also one scheduled on Wednesday, June the 12th, from 10:00 to 3:00, and Friday, June 16th, from 10:00 to 3:00. As we heard from Ms. Nybal, being prepared for disasters is important, so again, we'll urge you to sign up for the Monroe County Alert Notification System. That's for all weather and health-related issues. You can sign up, again, at our website, co.monroe.in.us. And we have extended the Assistance Fund to county residents who need assistance in pain for rent or utilities. So, if you are in need, and especially encourage people out in Bean Blossom Township, contact your local trustee for further information. One final thing, which is fun. Last week, we had the pleasure of hosting the IU Women's Basketball Team, the managers, the coach, and I want to congratulate Grace Berger. She's a graduate student who was drafted seventh in the WNBA draft by the Indiana Fever, so hopefully we'll get to watch her while she's still here in Indiana, which is a real joy. Are there any other announcements from my colleagues? Commissioner Thomas? There, we have no appointments today, so with that, we will adjourn, and we'll see you next week. Thank you. We do not have a work session, so thank you to everyone who's joined us.